To this end, one of the solutions, as you have heard today, was to erect a housing opportunity that will restore hope, and then restore faith, and then restore love for one another. So this recognition and celebration of housing those most in need, providing comprehensive, long-term supportive services, and a place youth can continue to find a new narrative for meeting their dreams and aspirations, is that light in the darkness. It is one of the answers to the question, where do we go from here? As the new president and CEO of Community Build, please know that we will continue to set our sights on projects like this, and working side by side with our elected. The best is still yet to come. Thank you very much.
Beautifully said. I also want to give shouts out to other folks from the Oversight Committee for HHH that are here. These are civilians who volunteer their time. Tanua Thrush. I want to thank Amelia Washington and Michael Lenz as well. Give them a round of applause and thank them too. Finally, I want to thank our deputy mayor for City Homeless Initiatives, Mochi, Christina Miller and her team, Ben, Amy, HHH team, past and future. You guys made this all happen too. So thank you and give them a round of applause. And with that, congratulations. Let's make 2020 a year of making a difference. I want to thank again, family for sharing your story. As you can hear, one of the kids is a little bit under the weather. There's been a bug going around everywhere in Los Angeles. I know that. But I want to thank them again for opening up. So let's give the scenes another round of applause. And welcome home, guys. With that, we'll see you at the next opening.
In LA this week, an historic moment in Los Angeles as the first of many Prop HHH-finished housing units opens its doors.
The city's Bureau of Engineering tackles homelessness head-on by building temporary shelters throughout the city, including this one to benefit homeless veterans. I'm Gil Reyes with details next.
I'm Saidah Pagan in Watts, where there's some good news for local residents who've been living in a food desert for far too long. I'll have that story coming right up.
Hey, everyone, I'm Yana Kay. Here's what's happening in LA this week. The city's first permanent supportive housing project funded by Proposition HHH has opened at 88th Street and Vermont Avenue, nearly three years after the first housing bonds were issued. For many people, this is a true blessing.
Just the way that, you know, my kids look and the excitement in their faces to not have to sleep in the truck no more, priceless.
We see here in plain sight what a vision is when it manifests itself physically. The commitment that Angelenos made just three years ago to see a building now open less than two and a half years after the first bonds were issued for Prop HHH.
This is a huge job that is before each and every one of us. But I truly believe, I am dumb enough to believe that together we can do this. And it begins with projects like this.
We wouldn't be here, and this wouldn't be possible, without the people to help us. They've done a great, great, great deal to get us where we're at, and I'm happy. And I'm glad that God put them in our life.
We have 149 permanent supportive housing projects, funded and under construction as we speak, which will manifest some 11,500 bedrooms of housing that both will keep people out of homelessness and bring them out of homelessness.
Rent subsidies and housing vouchers for tenants will be provided by both LA County and the city of LA. On the west side, even more housing is going up. This one is a Bridge Home site for veterans on the VA campus in Brentwood. Gil Reyes gives us an update on construction.
Hope may be coming for the two dozen or so homeless veterans camped outside the West LA VA campus. Temporary bridge housing with 100 beds is coming to the campus in February. You're going to have showers and laundry facilities. Is that something that sounds like you would take advantage of?
Yeah, sure, sure, yeah, yeah.
Anyone in the immediate area who is experiencing homelessness and a veteran, they would qualify for a place here at the Bridge Home Project.
Marcelino Asensio from the city's Bureau of Engineering gives us a preview. Two main structures are coming, each one with 50 beds and supportive services.
Right now, we're inside one of the sprung structures. We're standing right in the middle of the lounge area. Behind me, you can see some of the walls that are going up for some of the case manager offices. We'll also have some areas where we'll have some storage. And inside the facility here, on the exterior, you'll see that's where eventually the furniture will be installed for all the beds. This is the first step into getting that permanent housing. So this is an opportunity to provide some stability in someone's life so they can transition to something a little bit more permanent.
It needs to be a place that is inviting for them because many are concerned about coming into housing. So this interim housing needs to be welcoming.
City engineer Gary Lee Moore says months of environmental approvals and care goes into building just one shelter. The Bureau of Engineering is building several of them under Mayor Garcetti's Bridge Home plan. With frustration mounting over these facilities not being built fast enough, 2020 could be the year that LA finally puts a real dent on homelessness. Permanent supportive housing projects funded by Triple H dollars are now finally starting to open, and the Bureau of Engineering hopes to open more of these temporary shelters through June.
Five are in construction that'll be finished in February. We'll start another five in February. Two are in design. And our goal is to finish all of these by June of 2020. And that'll result in almost 1,400 beds, so 1,400 people off the street.
Hopefully more as residents move on to permanent housing to make room for new shelter residents in an ongoing cycle. Yes, LA is building. Let's just hope it can build faster than people fall into homelessness.
Mom always said, eat your veggies. And now residents in Watts don't have to go very far to get them. The area has been considered a food desert for decades. But Saidah Pagan tells us that's now a thing of the past. Cheers went up as the ribbon was cut marking the return of a Smart &amp; Final supermarket in the Watts area. Inside, hundreds of eager shoppers turned out on opening day, filling the aisles and the checkout lines. They were excited to finally find wholesome, fresh food without having to travel long distances.
I'm feeling ecstatic and grateful for this momentous occasion.
Watts is on the government's list of food deserts. That means residents have to travel more than a mile to go grocery shopping and often experience food insecurity. But after years of hard times, this underserved community is now benefiting from a massive revitalization program. LA City Council member Joe Buscaino was among those who made it happen.
But if you go inside the Smart &amp; Final today, you're going to see your neighbors working in there. You're going to see our Watts residents working. You're going to see residents from Jordan Downs working. This is what we're all about as a city.
Community activists agree that this supermarket symbolizes more than just food.
This Smart &amp; Final brings hope. It brings jobs. It brings everything that councilman said.
The huge grocery warehouse got rave reviews from shoppers who liked the high quality and competitive pricing.
What's important to local residents is that this particular store has a wide variety of produce and all of the major brands.
And it's great because I see everything and they have everything what I need. When I chop and I have to go to a different store, so and I think over here I'm going to find everything what I need.
City leaders say the Smart &amp; Final store is just the start. They have big plans for the Jordan Downs Plaza. New housing units are being built nearby. And before long, these residents may be shopping at a new Nike store and enjoying a cup of coffee at a Starbucks. Besides opening the new store, Smart &amp; Final also donated $7,500 to local community groups. Boots on the ground, that's the latest effort by the first council district to make the neighborhood safer. We were there as the area's first LAPD foot patrols hit the streets.
The reason we're here today is to announce the beginning of a foot patrol, LAPD, that the council member was able to secure funds to have his patrol here on the North Figueroa Corridor for the next two and a half years.
This was a project that was initiated by Councilman Sadio. He approached us and asked us if we'd be interested in blowing officers on the Figueroa Corridor on a foot beat. And of course, we were extremely interested. The whole intent of this is just to go back to that old community policing where officers get to know the businesses.
So the council member decided to want to seek funds, secure funds for this as a proactive preventative measure, to have police, or better to have them actually walking on the weekends where most of the issues happen, where there's more of the foot traffic.
That's an excellent partnership. I think it's very well needed in this community. There's a lot of foot traffic in this area. And at night, I know that my clients and my employees will feel a lot more safer now going home and going to their cars after they leave here. I think it's very good that they're going door to door to introduce themselves to the companies and the local businesses here. That way, we know what's going on and that we're aware that the service that they're providing is now forthcoming, and it's good to hear.
The police are going to be here to provide safety for everyone.
LA Census kiosks go nationwide. The 2020 homeless count is looking for volunteers. A toiletry drive gets underway. All this and more in City B. The Information Technology Agency and the Census team are collaborating on Census Action kiosks, computers configured for public spaces that people can use to answer the census. ITA created the desktop and laptop image and security guidelines and requirements. This model has now been picked up for a national recommendation to help other cities get more people to participate in the census. Homeless Count 2020 takes place January 21st through the 23rd, and your help is needed. Every year, we count the number of people experiencing homelessness throughout the county through the Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count. The count helps us better understand homelessness in our region and direct resources where they're needed most. Thousands of volunteers are needed to canvass more than 80 cities and 200 communities across LA County. Sign up today at theycountwillyou.org. Council District 6 has launched its annual toiletry drive on behalf of human trafficking survivors. Survivors of human trafficking often escape with little more than the clothes they are wearing. And toiletries can provide comfort and help restore sense of normalcy. Through February 6, toiletry donations such as shampoo, soap, hair products, dental products, and feminine hygiene items are being accepted. You can also give gift cards to be used by survivors to purchase their own toiletries. All items and gift cards will be donated to CAST, Saving Innocence, and Journey Out, three LA-based organizations that provide wraparound services and compassionate care to survivors of human trafficking. Drop-off locations include LA City Hall, LA City Hall Room 470, Sun Valley District Office, and Van Nuys City Hall Office. For information, you can also call Patricia Chavez at 213-473-7006.
Today, we have a senior snowball in which we welcome seniors who are in our Wreckin' Parks facilities through our Department of Aging. Come and celebrate the holiday season.
I love to see how the Getty House opens its doors to all residents. It's the people's house.
I feel very good. I'm 102 years young. And just to get out of the house and see the sunshine.
It's probably my very favorite event of the year. I love this event because there's more wisdom, more experience, more stories, more of Los Angeles's richness here in this event than any other event I go to each year.
So many times we seem to be forgotten, and this is what makes me feel good.
I like the beat, but I can't move my feet.
You dance harder than the young people when they come here. You know that these are the days to savor, to give back. It's also a chance, not just for folks to see Getty House and to find each other, but to learn critical information. So today, they're learning about the census and how we can make sure that all seniors are counted, fill out the census this year, 2020. Go to census.gov or show up at a local library, and we'll help you out.
For many kids of immigrant parents, staying connected to their cultural roots can be tough. But there's one city library program that's using art to plant a seed for future generations.
We are at Chinatown Branch Library. Today, we're having our Chinese New Year, Chinese Lanterns, Arts and Craft. We are celebrating Year of the Rat. It's very important for kids to be here today because this program is more than about celebrating Chinese New Year. It's about bringing awareness to the culture, to Chinese arts and craft, and it's about celebrating the Chinese traditions. We want, you know, children to understand where they're coming from, you know, where their families are from, you know, where they grew up, and, you know, things that they may not learn here so much like in school, they could learn here at the library. Chinese New Year is going to be held on January 25th, 2020. And we are having our Chinatown Golden Dragon Parade here on February 1st. So we just want to kind of build in all these cool activities.
Chinese New Year was started about 3,500 to 3,800 years ago. So the legend was that in this village in China, there was a monster.
As a Chinese, I always think that it's important to share my culture and heritage with other people so that other people can also learn from our culture and heritage. And at the same time, I love to learn, you know, from other people as well. Well, I hope that, you know, everybody will come out to celebrate Chinese New Year with us. It's a fun festival. We have the parade. You know, we have different dancing and different food, especially a lot of candies, and share our culture and celebrate with us and have a wonderful blessing for the whole year.
But wait, there's more. If you want to sharpen your street art skills, the library offers that too. Artist and East LA native Gajin Fujita recently held a hands-on workshop exploring techniques of spray painting, stenciling, and lettering.
It's very important for me personally because I was born and raised in the city, LA. And the public library that I frequented in my neighborhood served as like a sanctuary for me when I was a kid. And so I think it's really important that kids in the city get a taste of what art thinking could be like.
He's showing the participants, who are all teens, about doing his kind of art, you know, doing his street art, which is where he got started, sort of the ideas at the library. He uses very bold colors. And he tells us that he got those bold colors from looking at tropical fish books at the library.
For me, it's about trying to empower the youth of our city and strap them with, you know, knowledge of art.
We're more than just books and magazines and videos and DVDs. We're a cultural center. And so, you know, that's what first drew Gajin to the library, is he needed a place that was cooler, but he also thought of it as a community center. Maybe 10 or 15 years, we'll have an art card from one of these students. That would be nice.
The library has lots of other great programs. To learn more, visit lapl.org/events. From traditional cultural performances, food tastings, and family activities, the Ashagatsu Family Festival highlighted Japanese tradition and brought the community together.
Happy New Year!
It's an opportunity for us to celebrate the New Year, to ring in the New Year, but also to give back to our community, our local community, as well as to our members with an extraordinary day of high-energy, cultural celebration, entertainment.
We're so grateful that we have the opportunity to get a taste of the Japanese culture.
Things about each culture that are really important and that make every person an individual, but also brings people together.
How fun was that? Well, for more events at the Japanese American National Museum, visit j a n m dot org. Well, if you ask me what a fun night looks like, I'd say good food, good wine, and good friends. What could be better than that? Well, Union Station was the place to be for all those things.
2020 Uncorked Wine Festival, woo woo! Oh, to drink all the wine. There's 150 different vendors. So we will for sure be hitting each one of those up.
We have about 60 wineries from across the globe, gourmet food trucks, photo booths, live band, DJ, lots of fun stuff for people to come and enjoy with their friends. Everybody's got a taste in there, but events like this bring so many different people into one location. Really good wine, good friends, hopefully a little bit of trouble, just a little bit.
As you notice, like, there's a lot of great, like, vibe around here. The energy's so high, everybody's so happy.
The community is going to be up and popping when you come to events like this because it's free pouring, lots of vino, lots of sparkly bubbly. But it actually shows that, you know, LA still has that love, that energy for the community.
We will be back again in June to do a summer version this year.
A Happy New Year to everybody, and may this 2020 be spectacular.
How do you get your voice heard when it comes to community issues? Well, there's a city department called Empower LA that encourages you to play a bigger role in your local government. Saidah Pagan sat down with the new head of the department. Saidah.
Thanks, Yana. Today, we are in conversation with Raquel Beltran, the new general manager of the Los Angeles Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. She spoke to me about her vision for Empower LA. You were appointed a few months ago. So tell us what you've been doing in that time. I know you've been hard at work, meeting with some of these councils.
Well, I initiated a listening tour with the neighborhood councils. And I average six neighborhood councils a week. I've been able to visit about 59 neighborhood councils. And it has been a wonderful experience, talking and listening with the elected leadership from the communities all over Los Angeles.
A lot of public officials have gotten their start with the neighborhood councils. Tell us how that's possible.
It's my favorite part of this system. Whenever anybody decides that they're going to start interfacing with government, start attending government meetings, start figuring out what avenues exist in order for you to be able to express yourself, your thoughts, and to serve your community, you've already taken a step forward in learning how to govern, how to become an elected official.
My name is Lily Larson. I'm 17, and I've been an activist since I was five. There is no age too young to get involved in your community. Let's come together and make change for the highest good, for our neighborhoods, for our city, our state, our country, and our planet.
What I see happening rapidly is an increase in the number and the experience that young people are developing by being elected and appointed to serve on these neighborhood councils. The numbers are increasing all over the city.
We're both running for positions in the city of Van Nuys. And we just want to get more information on how to start building our campaign and also getting information on how we can make our city better and what are specific roles that we can do to make our community a lot better.
They are energetic. They're inspired by other young people around the world who are getting engaged for a variety of reasons in their communities and in global issues. And the neighborhood council system provides people that opportunity.
Now, I'm sure there are people who are watching, who would like to get involved. So give us some first steps.
So I encourage people to start by just going to our website, empowerla.org. Research which neighborhood council is near your home. Attend those meetings. I always tell people, just go check it out, see what's happening. Get on the list so that you can start receiving the agenda so that you can become familiar with what they're discussing. Start attending the meetings. And then, when you feel comfortable, throw your hat in the ring, become a candidate. Ask the Neighborhood Empowerment Advocate to help you in that process, to help you learn more about it. They're available to give you that kind of support.
Well, thank you so much for empowering us by giving us this great information.
It's my pleasure.
Empower LA!
Do your part to help beautify a local elementary, enjoy an evening benefiting Friends of the LA River, and take in a live outdoor music show. All this and things to do. Join Human Rights Campaign LA for their annual Day of Service. Volunteers are encouraged to spend a day being of service to Wal Grove Elementary School, doing campus beautification activities in honor of the service, work, and life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The HCR MLK Day of Service happens Monday, January 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more info, look for their event on signup.com. Join the good folks at Mohawk Bend for River Fest 2019, a very special event benefiting the Friends of the Los Angeles River. Sip on local brews while you chat with fellow Angelenos who are working towards urban river revitalization. Enjoy a river-themed playlist, raffle prizes, and more. The Third Annual River Fest happens Saturday, January 18th, beginning at 12 noon. For more info, visit folar.org. Ease into your new year with an afternoon of outdoor music brought to you by So Far Los Angeles. This music collective puts together live, open-air shows featuring three different acts, curated to give audiences a diverse musical experience. Saturday, January 18th, we'll see the group Soul Flow take center stage at a secret location. Soul Flow at So Far Sounds begins at 3 p.m. For ticket information, visit sofar sounds dot com. Would you like to learn how to master wig making in one day, even if you've never used a sewing machine? Ofingaz Beauty Academy is going to unveil all the secrets to lace front and lace closure wig making in a hands-on, eight-hour wig-making class. If you're ready to take your skills to the next level or just try something new for 2020, reserve your spot today. The Fingaz Beauty Academy Hands-On Wig Making Class happens Sunday, January 19th, beginning at 9 a.m. For more, visit lacelock.net. For the fourth year, Lee's Market and the Brothers of Iota Zeta Lambda are pulling out all the stops for the MLK Day of Service. This local fraternity chapter will once again be passing out toys and providing meals in honor of Dr. King's birthday. Join the festivities Sunday, January 19th, beginning at 12 noon at Lee's Market Takeout. If you need more info, send an email to leesmarketcatering@sbccglobal.net. And that's a look at some things to do. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week. MyLA311 links Angelinos with the services and information they need to enjoy their city. Find the nearest fire station, library, or even senior citizen center. You can even pay your DWP bill and report illegal dumping. MyLA311 puts the power of City Hall in the palm of your hand. Los Angeles County has one of the highest homeless populations in the nation. Many of our homeless neighbors are veterans, women, children, survivors of domestic violence, and working individuals who can't keep up with housing costs. Later, Los Angeles Homeless Count on January 21st, 22nd...
Okay, good morning, and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Today is February, January, I'm sorry, today is Friday, January 17th, and this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Let's run through the agenda.
Blumenthal, Bonn, Busquets, Sadio, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Kresker, Corian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, and Wesson. Twelve members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
First, order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell moves, and Mr. Lee seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weezer moves, and Mr. Sadio seconds, next. Members, we can go ahead and direct our attention to the agenda.
Madam President, items one through 12 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order.
Very good, Madam President. At this time, would you like to vote on one through 12?
Yeah, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
What's next?
That takes council to presentations.
Okay. Mr. Sadio, are you ready, sir?
See, there's no question where Tracy should stand.
Yes.
Good morning, Mr. Sadio.
Good morning. Rise and shine, everybody. So, look, you may recall last March, I spoke about us opening the new Albion Park, and we were very excited about it, 10 acres, and I talked about how innovative it was, how environmental it was, how it checked off every box that anybody has concern about with respect to our environment and serving our community. And I was very, very proud of it, and so today I've asked the village of engineers and geeks to join us today. But the reason we're doing this is not to be redundant about what we experienced last spring, but to acknowledge the fact that not only did we think it was a great project, but those who make that determination have determined that this is the number-one park in the state of California. So let me repeat that again for all those who just came into the stadium. This is the number-one park in the state of California. And so that is quite an accomplishment. This community deserves it, but who also deserves this recognition is all those who were part of it. It was determined by the Engineering News Record in Landscape and Urban Development as the best park in California. And so what I want to do is thank everybody who is here, who has participated in this endeavor. Thank them, we want to acknowledge them, we want to bring them up, and I'm going to turn over the mic to each representative for those who have come to join us for the Bureau of Engineering. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, council member, council members here in the room. Bureau of Engineering is thrilled to have participated in this project, given the opportunity by the council office to be a consolidator of design efforts. We bring architecture and engineering and landscape architecture, and we addressed a river-adjacent site in a comprehensive way that cleans water, that more than doubled the size of the park, and it took an army of folks from the Bureau of Engineering. The landscape design was done by our in-house staff, and I'm thrilled to be able to honor this project today on behalf of all the staff who worked with me to make it a reality. Thank you very much.
On behalf of Recreation and Parks, I want to bring up Mike Scholl, who, as I said, this is a collaboration of the entire city family here, and so, Mike, please.
Join us, my brother.
Thank you, council member. I just want to say that, you know, the partnerships that we make across departments on these multi-benefit projects, I mean, there's lots that we can do within the city for helping our stormwater, helping the environment by using the property of the parks. But one of the biggest benefits that's come out of that, not only the environmental benefits, but is the number of children and youth that are using this park. That has drastically expanded, more than three to four times the number of kids now have the ability to play in this park where they didn't have those assets before. And for us, that's, you know, for the long-lasting, you know, benefit to the public, and they don't realize that really complicated infrastructure underneath it that's doing all these extra benefits, but the families around Council District One that come and use that facility, I know, are just, you know, amazed by the improvements that we've done there. So I want to thank the Bureau of Engineering and Bureau of Sanitation and the support from the council member for recognizing us today. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of a gracious city. Now, I'd like to bring up Enrique Saldivar from the Bureau of Sanitation.
Thank you, council members. Sadio, I'm going to yield my time to Tracy Minamidi, who's the Chief Operating Officer for LA Sanitation and Environment. Tracy?
Good morning. We are so very proud to be here amongst all of our colleagues, colleague departments and bureaus to celebrate this great award for Albion Park. Thank you to council members Sadio for hosting the park. This is really a great testament to the work that's done through the Prop O project, and also moving on into the new program that we are endeavoring, which is the Safe Clean Water Program through Measure W. These efforts are tremendous for us in terms of ensuring water quality and improving the water bodies in the city of Los Angeles. So we're very excited to be a part of it, we're very excited to be involved in making that difference to improve water quality. So thank you all, this is truly an honor.
So did I tell you that the park has new soccer fields, new basketball courts, new fitness equipment, new playground equipment, restrooms, safe and secure, sports insecurity lighting, classroom areas, plazas, a walking area, picnic areas, ADA ramps, childcare, a swimming pool, and parking lots with permeable pavers, new landscaping with smart irrigation, and an enlarged and reoriented natural turf basketball, softball field. All of that making this the number-one park in the state of California. Let me also thank the Bureau of Contract Administration, Soli Miller Contracting Company, Tetra Tech for their incredible work, and also Arcadis. I want to thank each and every single one of them, and I thank you for your attention to this matter. Thank you, everybody.
Very well, another round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Thank you. And Arcadis.
Thank you.
Here, Tracy.
Okay, members, let's move on to general public comment. Patricia McAllister, are you here?
Can you please quiet them down before you start?
Sir, if we can please quiet the room down, Ms. Sergeant.
Thank you. Ms. McAllister, we got it, thank you.
Go ahead, you have one minute of general public comment.
Good morning, Madam President. I'd like to say that the Controller's Office needs to be changed. When I first started coming to these meetings, I was wondering, how could... When I first started coming to these meetings, I was wondering, how can a controller be elected? Controllers are supposed to be certified public accountants. They should know about accounts receivable, accounts payable, payroll, clearing. I've worked in accounting offices. I have university courses in accounting. Our accountant, our controller right now, he's a lawyer. Most of you are lawyers in here. The Finance Committee, they're lawyers. They have no business even being here, especially on the Finance Committee. So I've been kind of hard on you guys, but I think, besides some of you being crooked, you're not qualified for these positions. Paul Corretts wants to be the next controller. He has a degree in history. Come on. That should not be an elected position, the controller. Controller has to be a hired salary person with a CPA, Certified Public Accounting. And I'm going to see how we can get the law changed.
Mike Greenspan, are you here? Come on up, sir. You have your one minute of general public comment.
Mike Greenspan, Orange Bowl champ, Florida Gators, UCLA. I still don't see the bums. Now, wanted to go over something because we are on target. On target for what? Well, the completion of the Target store at 5500 Sunset Boulevard. Well, after all, we know it was controversial, so they had to go job shop and find a judge that would let them continue with everything that was illegal in the first place. But let's give credit where credit is due. It got done because Herb Wesson shoved it down our throats. Why did he do that? Because they've got a full liquor license, and Herb is a preacher pushing liquor. Mr. B-O-O-Z-E. So if you don't have enough places to get liquor, go to the Target on Sunset Boulevard. And remember, Herb Wesson and Michael Byer of Torrance are in the liquor business. So it's a conflict of interest. And anybody but Wesson for supervisor. Thank you. Thanks, wetback gill.
Okay, next speaker is Dr. Mello Desire. Are you here? Dr. Mello Desire. She's not here. Cory? Is Cory here? She's not in the room. Armando Herman?
And Mr. Herman, as you're approaching the microphone, may I remind you, do not shout into the microphone.
This is your first and final warning, Mr. Herman.
Baynak 52.1. Intimidation, harassment. Why can't you just shut up? City Attorney's Office, City Hall East, why can't you just leave me alone? But no, pussies want to pick with dicks, and I'm a dick. And that's for sure, said the fat little slob on this end of the horseshoe. What do you got to say on this side? See, the enemy today are all of you. This is going to go on the record, what you are, the enemy of Los Angeles, with Gavin Newsom creating a homeless crisis, and that fucking Holocaust faggot Eric Garcetti can't fix our problem. So the Democrats, as Trump said politely, fuck you. Go to hell, because I can't wait to see the nigger shoot again. Bagdad Zarian versus Pasadena, United States. Thank you so much. Mr. Sergeant of Arms, for the pussy.
Thank you.
Dr. Mello Desire, is she back? Still not in the room. Cory Smith? Okay, appears that neither one of these two folks are in the room, so we're going to go ahead and close general public comment. Okay, members, we're going to take a short recess, or our 245 item could be circulated. So if you can just go ahead and take a short recess. Okay. Okay, members, we're back on. Believe everything's about to get circulated, but I do, we have some special guests in the audience that I'd like to introduce. From Community Charter Elementary School, we have Mr. Brandon and Mr. Sebastian's fifth grade class. Can we all have you stand and wave? Stand up. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Let me see if we can't get the camera to pan on the kids. There you are. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Brandon and Mr. Sebastian, for bringing our students here. I hope you have a great visit. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clark, what's next?
Madam President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? There's so many activities going on this weekend. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want more to invite the community to join with Councilman Harris Dawson and Councilman Herb Wesson and myself, and come out to the King Parade this Sat, this Monday. The parade, I think, is gonna start around King and Western. It's gonna culminate in Limerd Park, and there's gonna be a King Festival there with food, music, exhibits, fun, a real opportunity to celebrate the legacy of Martin Luther King, but also the legacy of our community. And so it's time to come together. There's gonna be a tremendous float, tremendous caravan of floats preceding the festival. And my colleague, Councilman Harris Dawson, might wanna add to it, but it's gonna be an exciting event, and we're inviting neighbors, families, and friends to come out and celebrate.
Mr. Dawson, you also want to invite us?
Yes, yes.
It starts in your district?
You're all invited to the parade in the eighth and tenth council districts. Also, after the parade or at the end of the parade at Limerd Park, we have the Freedom Festival, and the festival there in the park will have activities for children. Lots of organizations will there, be there offering services. We'll have about a dozen food trucks. We'll have three stations, one by KJLH, the other by KDAY, and another one by The Wave. They'll all have live act, live music into Sunset on Monday night. And Personnel Department will be there, so you'll be able to apply for city jobs on the spot. So there's something for everybody, something for the whole family at the Freedom Festival at Limerd Park after the King Parade on Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. I will be there with my new kicks. Thank you very much. Is there any other announcements, Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, today marks the twenty-sixth anniversary of the Northridge earthquake, which took the lives of fifty-nine Angelenos, caused tremendous damage to the San Fernando Valley. And as we mark that anniversary, I think that it's important that people take this opportunity to begin preparing, because we know, of course, that while, that earthquake, we don't know when the next earthquake will occur, but we know that it will. It's inevitable, and it's important that all Angelenos prepare. I would recommend that everybody go to readyla.org, which provides a lot of tools that will allow people to prepare their own household, knowing that it will take a while for first responders to be able to react to any emergency like that. Los Angeles is famous for its earthquakes, for its fires, for its flooding. We are the natural disaster capital of the world in many respects, and we need to be prepared for it, so I would urge everybody to go to readyla.org.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Any other announcements, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to let everyone know who's listening that next week is a golden opportunity for Angelenos across the city to volunteer on the annual Losa homelessness count. So that kicks off on the twenty-first. There's going to be a press conference announcing that, and we're trying to spread all of the news that we possibly can to encourage more volunteerism, and it's a wonderful opportunity for folks who are really concerned about the crises in Los Angeles to take part in helping, and leaning in and taking part into helping solve the crises. With this annual homelessness count, we get data, we receive data based on the count that informs our approach to seeking additional resources to help address the homelessness crises, which of course is the crises of the day. Just in the thirteenth district, for example, the count begins on the twenty-third, which is next, next Thursday, the twenty-third. And the sites that we will assemble volunteers include Echo Park, Silver Lake, Hollywood, Los Feliz, East Hollywood, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Rue, that's also Council six thirteen and four, where we're going to count most of the neighborhoods that evening. So I look forward to encouraging as much volunteer as we possibly can get to help with this, with this most important issue. And you can log on to the Losa website to get detailed information about how you can get involved. The dates, wherever you may live, on where the council will be conducted, it's a county-wide count, but of course, Los Angeles City has forty percent of the total population of the County of Los Angeles, so we encourage everyone to get involved and find out information by logging on to the Losa website. And we appreciate all the volunteerism we can get, because it actually helps us get additional resources across the county from the state on how we address this crises more effectively, more efficiently, and more quickly, so everyone can participate in helping to address this crises. And with that, I look forward to seeing everyone next week.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Any other announcements, members? If seen none, if we can all please rise for adjourned motions. Are there any adjourned motions to my right? Any adjourned emotions, Mr. Blumenfield?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in the memory of Herb Madsen. He is the, or was the co-founder of the Woodland Hills Homeowners Organization. He passed away at the age of ninety-five last month, and he is someone who's widely known throughout the West Valley and beyond for his work to make Woodland Hills really shine. Growing up, he was part of the Greatest Generation, and he upheld that attribution in virtually every endeavor he pursued in and after World War II. He was born in Chicago. He enlisted in the Army as the country entered the war, and he was charged with physically and mentally training hundreds of troops for the rigors of battle. When he got out of uniform, he came to Los Angeles, where he not only created a respected mail distribution business and mailing house, but he became a tireless volunteer to raise the quality of life for people living in the Woodland Hills and West Valley area. He joined forces with Gordon Murley to help found the Woodland Hills Homeowners Organization, which has thrived ever since as one of the preeminent homeowners organizations, because they believe that community residents should have greater control and a bigger voice in how the city dealt with issues. When the idea of creating a system of neighborhood councils was first raised during the Valley Secession Movement, Herb was at the forefront and one of the initial founding fathers of the Woodland Hills Warner Center Neighborhood Council, on which he literally served continuously from that day until about a year ago, when he was sidelined by a serious illness. He was also a longtime member of the Woodland Hills Chamber of Commerce, and he was an active participant in the American Legion post A-2-6 for over thirty years. He was everywhere in Woodland Hills. But as the current Woodland Hills Homeowners Association President John Walker said, "He was quiet. He would often let other individuals do the talking in these community service organizations." And to continue the quote, "But make no mistake, he was a vital part of each and every organization which he helped create and participate in." Thank you, Herb, for your service to this country, your immense leadership in making Woodland Hills a wonderful community to work, live, and play. Our lives are better because of you. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Any other adjourned emotions? Seen none. Have a great weekend. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.